We need to give you a public service announcement in case of an emergency. Could everyone please exit the chamber, you can right at the stairwell, proceed to the ground floor and exit the building to allow for emergency air personnel to enter. Thank you very much. Also, there's a sign up sheet at the podium. Anyone wishing to address the council at the public speaking portion of the meeting, if you could please sign up and then we'll call you after you come down. Would everyone please rise up? My good evening to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a mission. Please do remain standing for one second. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, and now does that mean you do an opening? May I please have a walk off? Alderman Dunn? Excuse me. Alderman Satch? Alderman Will? Here. Alderman Dawson? Alderman Carey? Here. Alderman David? Here. Alderman Mills? Here. Alderman Chatter? Yep. Alderman Rock? Here. We have it formed. Do you get a motion to dispense with the minutes of previous meeting? If you approve same. Second. All in favor? Aye. And so approve eight zero. I get a motion to dispense with the reading of general bills. Second. All in favor? Aye. Approve eight zero. We now move into the public speaking portion of the meeting. And just for your information, the council has set aside a 30-minute allotment time for this purpose. I'm not sure how many speakers we have yet, or if we can give you a form. And just five, five to thirty-six minutes apiece if you so desire. Just please direct your comments to the council chair. You all are not allowed to engage in debate. So first speaker, please.
Nick Moritzis.
Hello, Nick, can you just provide your name and address?
Hello, my name is Nick Moritzis. I live at 184 Hillside Terrace, Kingston. I am a partner at Dallas Hot Wieners. I came to talk to you tonight about building a worse Broadway. While I have no objections to new sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, or the new traffic lights, I am appalled that the city and county is even entertaining the idea of removing any parking from Right-Aid to Burger King. Even though the county is proposing to take away sidewalk in front of Right-Aid, they keep five parking spaces in an attempt to appease me and some other businesses, that is not enough. What about the other parking spaces across the street from the hair salon, Joe Bee's, et cetera? The parking in front of the high school was also staked. For example, back at the school night last week, all the parking surrounding the high school was taken. When there is an event at the neighborhood center, the whole block is packed and there is overflow into the private parking lots, like tonight. It does not seem as though the planners took special events into consideration. There are currently three empty storefronts on my block that will soon be occupied, and when that happens, there will be even more pressure on those parking spaces. We live in a small city, but many people drive to Casey from surrounding rural areas. If you take away your customers' parking convenience, they will shop elsewhere. The municipal lot next to Monkey Joe's is always full during school hours. The city will also be issuing parking permits that will also put more pressure on that lot. The county has proposed to make an entrance into that municipal lot from Broadway. It's not a good idea. That will remove two to three parking spaces to make the entrance. Please do not let them do that. The traffic in parking site that the county did says that there are twenty to thirty bicycles on Broadway per hour. There is no way that this is true, even on a good day. How can anyone justify their removal of parking space on a one-day study? With the proposed reduction in size of traffic lanes, fire trucks and other emergency vehicles will not have enough room to pass when there is traffic. For example, in front of my store, the total traffic lane width is twenty-eight feet wide. The proposed width would be twenty. When there are parked cars in the parking lane and traffic, there will not be any room for cars to move over so the fire truck can get through. Winter is coming. The snowplow will not be able to clear the bike lane if there are parked cars in the way. So now, business owners will have to clear a path through the bike lane to get to the parked cars so people can come in. Also, garbage pickup will be made more difficult because again, if there's parked cars in the parking lane, the garbage truck will be blocking the traffic lane. Currently, there is enough room for cars to go around. The plan is like Swiss cheese, full of holes. Thirty businesses and over eight hundred and twenty people have signed this petition to stop the removal of parking on Broadway. Please come and see me at Dallas and show you the margins in the road that the surveyors have made. The bicycle lane should be diverted to Prince Street. Thank you for your time. Please do not approve the plan the way it's currently proposed.
That's the petition, eight hundred and twenty people.
Thank you. Do you want to hand that to us, Nick? Is that copied or...?
Uh, the mayor has copies of most of it.
Okay.
I'll make one.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Chris Schrader. Hi. I don't really need the mic. My name is Chris Schrader. I live at eighteen Ora Place. I'm calling in regards of the bike trail and everything, and the parking. I, as a grandmother, love taking my children on Broadway shopping. If you're going to be having the bike trail there, you're not going to have places to park with children. Us as handicapped, I am a handicap, so where am I going to park? Are you going to give me extra places to park? The parking lot, yes, is filled during the week with high school kids. Right-Aid, you can't park in here only if you've got a right aid. The Midtown Center, yes, they are repairing the Midtown Center. There's no place to park there. Even when people go to the program, there's not places at this time to park. What happens later on? We're all going to suffer. Just please, please, we beg you, to reroute it and rethink what you're going to hurt. A lot of these businesses and their families. You're really going to hurt them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Kathleen Meles, and our business is Monkey Joe Roasting Company at four seventy-eight Broadway. And I want to speak about building a better Broadway. When my husband conceived of the idea of opening a coffee roasting business fifteen years ago, he studied demographics and the best locations for a year in order to make this adventure work and to limit our risks. Because obviously, we were older. We weren't young people. We are, okay. Anyway, he chose this location in Midtown Broadway, much to the surprise of those who were eager to see a coffee roasting business, but they were also wondering why we didn't open it uptown or downtown. But they weren't as aware of what makes a coffee business successful. Quick and easy access is a major parameter in our business. That is convenience that customers demand. Although our coffee is the best that can be found in the coffee-growing world, we don't fool ourselves into thinking that that alone will drive customers to our door. One customer last week asked a friend why she drives by Monkey Joe every day but gets her coffee out of chain. Convenience, they have a drive for it. Why do people buy current coffee makers when there are much better ways to make coffee? Convenience. Quality will be sacrificed for convenience and time constraints. As a business owner, we know what makes our business successful. A major reason that we chose this location was its parking convenience for easy access for all the people rushing about around us who desire our coffee every day but have no time to waste. This is not leisure time, it's a work zone. We're different from uptown. Placing obstacles in the way, removing access for our loyal customers are just adding unnecessarily to the already busy mix of cars, foot traffic, emergency vehicles, and creating exactly the wrong environment for our business. Midtown is a work and school area unlike uptown and downtown Kingston. People are hurrying about to and from their homes, catching a quick break on their way by in both directions. Our busiest hours are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM with major peaks around office, hospital, school break times. Finding an open parking spot is key to those customers. They don't have time to roam around or find a turnaround for this stop. Monkey Joe is already heavily invested in Midtown Kingston as well as thirty-plus other independent businesses. Along this area of Broadway are some of the most successful longstanding businesses in the city with delivery trucks, some of them eighteen-wheelers needing to pull in on either side of the street and having probably the most heavily trafficked area for emergency vehicles. Planners did not think it important to include us, the business owners, or the hospital, or the high school, or emergency providers in this major roadway change. We have real-life experience, not projections based on formulas and minimal planning. We don't feel they did their homework. We don't feel they really planned. That said, adding two-way bike traffic hindering access to successful businesses is just not a good change for our business and our location in Kingston. A backstreet, we feel, would provide a better choice for everyone involved, and if the cycles choose, they could still use Broadway. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gwen Sorenson. Hi, I'm Gwen Sorenson from Stone Soup Food Company, right two stores down from Monkey Joe's, and I can only second, triple, quadruple everything Kathy already said. When we have delivery trucks on Mondays, we have two huge trucks that sometimes have to park two blocks away to find enough room to just wheel the food to our store, to our location. I have been in a car accident pulling out of our driveway because there's no room on Broadway as it is. I have five little employees, we're a small store, that have no place to park now because if they come to work one minute past seven-thirty, the parking lot available to them is filled, overflowed with high school students who sit there for the entire day with no access for parking for anybody else. So to remove the parking that we have now on the street is just, it's inconceivable that we would be able to get customers in our store, that we would be able to function on our deliveries. We have lunch deliveries. People know they can't get to our stores, so they call for a delivery. We can't even get a car on the street close enough to the door. We have to walk sometimes two blocks with food to get it to our vehicle so we can deliver your lunches. And I would really strongly hope that you reconsider this. It's not in any of the businesses' best interest, which translates to lower revenue and tax money that Kingston has to work with. It's bad all the way around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joel B. Dance. Hello, Joel B. Dance. I own Joe Bee's, four-five-six Broadway. Four-five-six Broadway. Just to summarize what's been said here tonight, when this project was first presented through the community development board, which I'm part of, there was a real, we're looking for a vision to attract more people to Kingston because what we see here is beautiful, and we see the growth, and we see uptowns doing great, downtowns doing great. Boy, if we can make a magical, beautiful Broadway theater, and what we have going on, and a brand-new high school, and it's just a great vision. For us to pull money somewhere out from some money, I'd need somebody's bed to get this Broadway project done. Taxpayers definitely aren't going to pay for this, and we understand that. So we did need to go get money from someplace else. I understand that money is happening all around the country and around the world to build these greenways and get more cars off the street, and we do understand that. You know, make no bones about it, we understand, we do want a beautiful Broadway, we do want new sidewalks, we do want new lights, we do want everything that a nice city has. It's nice that when, you know, your friends or family come from out of town and the city's looking really good, you can kind of show it off a little bit as opposed to drive someplace else when they come here. You know, show them, you know, the reservoir or something. The Walch Hill Valley Rail Trail is a beautiful rail trail. I ride it myself. I ride rail trails in a lot of different places. I do bike. When I do bike in this city, I bike from point A to point B. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that way to hop on Broadway to come down, to come, you know, to hop on like a train. I would still cut through the side streets and get to where I'm going. A bike lane is a bike lane, and a bike trail is a bike trail. What you guys are proposing, or has been proposed, I don't mean to say you guys, because I honestly believe that some of you guys don't even know about the proposal until just recently, the actual details of the proposal. I know that some of you guys have been part of the plan, but I know that also some of you haven't even come by to talk to us about what we think of the plan. So, a bike trail is what has been proposed, where it's a super-wide thing with two lanes and barriers. Most major cities have a bike lane, in cities like Boston where they can't, they can't extend the roads because the roads are so old. They have share-a-lanes where there's a little bike trail there, it's three feet, and the people that are riding the bike are smart enough not to get hit by cars, and they make it work. To take away ten or thirteen feet of our section of Broadway is going to hurt our business badly. If anybody here has ever been in the food business, they'll understand that every hour that you're open, it's a battle, and if one thing goes wrong, your businesses could go down. Eighty-five percent of food and restaurant, you know, bar-type businesses fail because there are so many different variables from your employees, to health standards, to pricing, to competition. For us to lose parking spaces in that section of Broadway, just one parking space, would be bad for everyone. We do share all the spaces. We have a hair salon, we have a hot dog place, we have pizza, we have soup, we have coffee, we have sandwiches, we have a hospital, we have a high school, we have YMCA, we have Midtown Center, we have doctors' offices, and we have not too many parking spaces. So, what I would like to leave as a final note here, if we could get a final product wrapped up and shown to us what the final product looks like before, you know, we just want the opportunity to say, please don't take our parking spaces again, if that's what's going to happen, you know, no matter who we have to talk to about it. An easy solution is what these guys have just said, you know, the trail can come up the way it's come and just divert around Prince Street and go around us to where Broadway opens up again. It's really simple. Okay? Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. That concludes the ones that have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Please come up. Give your name and address.
Bill Hutton. I own Monkey Joe Roasting Company Building. My address is eighty-nine Prince Street. There's a few things that else besides the parking space loss that is significant to me is that I've done some studying of green bike lanes. And if you go to, do a Google, the first two things that come up are advocates for bicycles. And one of them is greenlane.org. And within that site, it states that this is inappropriate type of safety for cyclists. It doesn't work without a full, solid barrier keeping the bike lane separated from traffic, which would mean that you're literally blocking off a whole three-foot curb, the length of this bike lane. Secondly, is that it's not appropriate for a small rural city. It would be appropriate in a large city such as Boston or maybe in Seattle where we have much more control over snow removal and the ability to use this on a year-round basis. Economically, as everyone has spoken, this is a disaster. Right now, what I have observed on Broadway is an average probably of three to ten cyclists a day. And I'm observing them out my window while I'm working. So I've been up there and I've been looking out. But if we put a camera on it out of the window, you can actually see this and track how much bicycle traffic we have. If we don't get two hundred cyclists, you're not going to take, it would take two hundred cyclists to replace one parking spot. Because the average of the number of cyclists that stop and buy something in that corridor is one a day of all cyclists right now. So you'd have to multiply it, a hundred to replace one parking spot. But more importantly, it's not safe for cyclists. If you read all we will give you or send you, the web addresses, that you can read this yourself, and these are bicycle advocacy groups, not against cycling. And I'm not against cycling, I'm cyclist myself. I've ridden Broadway probably as much as anyone in my lifetime. And I've owned, or owned the building in which there's been a bicycle shop for twenty-five years. Previous to Monkey Joe's, it was the Kingston Cycle. And I can tell you that no matter what you do with a bike lane, what it does for cyclists is it gives them a false sense of security, and they don't follow the rules of riding the road. And at every intersection, it becomes a more and more of a danger instead of less of a danger. If you take everything that everyone else has said, but if you take safety into consideration first for cyclists, this is the wrong thing to do. If you want to create a bike pathway or a designated bikeway through the city, that is a good idea. My feeling is it shouldn't be on Broadway. It can go up Jansen Avenue, it can go up Hasbrook Avenue, it can go down Prince Street, it can go up Smith Avenue. If you ride in the city and you want to avoid traffic, that's the route you're going to take anyway. And it's also the safest route because you have less traffic to deal with in both directions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to address the council?
My name is Sean Klementer. I own two properties on Broadway, I own four sixty Broadway, which is my hair salon, and I own four seventy Broadway, which is Stone Soup, which Gwen has occupied. I've lived on Broadway for fifteen years, lived, had a store, lived upstairs, and over the time, the parking is just, and then you have, in the winter, you have the snow, you can't park on Broadway. I mean, it's great to see that everybody's trying to make the city better, but the only way to make it better is to sit down with the business owners because they are the ones that are driving this, you know, area. This block right here was the best block on Broadway, and it's been like that since Monkey Joe's moved in there. They brought a nice diverse crowd, which I'm going to be honest with you, when we moved in there, I said to myself, I'll never make it. And look, this whole time, he's made that block what it is. And, you know, to take away these parking spots from all these businesses that need it doesn't make sense. You need to sit down and speak to them and try to figure out a way to make it work. There's a lot of stuff that, I don't know, I mean, I've lived here, so I know, you have all these huge trees that are in front of all those buildings down on this block where Burger King is, that block the storefronts, erode the sidewalks, I mean, the sidewalks are coming up, the trees growing to the foundations. It all sounds good, it looks good on paper, and so you realize over time what's going to happen. There's no places for all these bike lanes, for these bikes to be locked up. We put up bike locks a few years ago, they're all missing. There's all holes in the sidewalks up and down Broadway. The bricks that were replaced five, six years ago are all eroding, especially up where the hair salon is and in front of Joe Bee's. I don't know why it's so much worse there than in the middle of the block, maybe because the intersection may allow the snow to salt. But it's great to see that everybody's trying to make the area better, but you need to speak to the businesses because the businesses are the most important, not these people that are going to be riding these bicycles that don't live in the city, that they don't feed their family off of their business that's in the middle of the city. And most of these people that are making decisions don't live in the city, Kate. They don't know what goes on on this block. They drive by, up and down. In the morning, when I bring my son to school, I live on Hunter Street, it takes me fifteen minutes to get from Hunter Street to the end of Broadway. And the traffic is insane, and you're going to take away more parking spots and add more, you know, during the construction and everything. It's just a bad idea, it needs to be thought about, and it needs to be discussed more with the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? See no one else. Now clear. Public speaking portion of this meeting closed. Now entering claims and communication. Any no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Again, motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills, and they say approve. Motion. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Bill, eight, eight zero. And we will now enter the report of the case. Resolution number one ninety-eight.
Resolution number one ninety-eight of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen Department of Public Works budget.
Question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We have the resolution number one ninety-nine.
Resolution number one ninety-nine of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen buyer's apartment budget.
Under question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two hundred.
Resolution number two hundred of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen buyer apartment budget.
Under question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We have the resolution number two oh one.
Resolution number two oh one of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen wastewater treatment facility budget.
Under question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We have the resolution number two oh two.
Resolution number two hundred and two of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen parks and recreation budget.
Under question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh three.
Resolution number two hundred and three of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Recommending approval for modifications to the two thousand and fifteen engineering budget.
Under question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh one.
Resolution number two hundred and four of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Appointing members to the arts commission.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh five.
Resolution number two hundred and five of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York and one-way street on West Jamil Street.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh six.
Resolution number two hundred and six of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York. Altering traffic signals at the intersection of Wall and Jones Streets.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, seven one. We now move on to resolution number two oh seven.
Resolution number two hundred and seven of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York. Repealing handicap parking on St. James Street.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh eight.
Resolution number two hundred and eight of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York and a handicap parking on Hunter Street.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two oh nine.
Resolution number two hundred and nine of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York and a handicap parking on Hunter Street.
On the question. Alderman.
Mr. President, I'd like to do a little further review on this. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn back to council committee.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn back. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion in the second. On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Resolution is deferred back to committee. Now we'll move on to resolution number two ten.
Resolution number two hundred and ten of two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York and a handicap parking on Auburn Street.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two eleven.
Resolution number two hundred and eleven of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Adopting a new comprehensive plan.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two twelve.
Resolution number two hundred and twelve of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Authorizing bonding for the LED streetlight conversion project in a amount of $2,100,000.
On the question. There is no discussion. Alderman Wells, to president.
Well, this has been a long path. Let's try again. First of all, I support this resolution and I'm gonna be a yes vote. I just want, I think it's a good opportunity to just take a brief look back at how we got here. I think everybody knows, understands the benefits of LED street lighting and the energy and electricity it saves and the low maintenance and so forth. But we already had a high figure for our lights to replace them with LED. We started back in June of last year after we spent, the improvement spent $15,000 for a feasibility study. At that time, the study came up with numbers that are really quite different from where we ended up. And this is from the consultant that went on to bid on and win the $105,000 engineering portion. So back in June of 2014, there was a simple payback, which is the amount of time it takes to recoup the money spent, estimated three point one years. And now with a two point one, and really it's a two point two million, two point two two million dollars on are being asked to prove because rolling in the cost of the consultant on top of all the fixture costs and the contingency and so forth were two point two two million. With that, looking at a five, almost a five and a half year payback time return on investment. So that shifted considerably. That went from three point one to five point four years. I don't know what changed in the meantime. I thought that what we were hiring this firm to do was to help us find the most efficient and cost-effective solution to this, to what we were, what our goal was. So when you look at the cost, where we started, we were looking at $350 a fixture. And where we ended up was over $900 a fixture. Other cities done this, completed it successfully and have spent considerably less, so. We're paying premium for this and it's gonna take longer to pay back. I think we could have done a better job at studying this, given the time that we've had the last sixteen months to get to where we are now. Instead of spending, and in that time it could have saved, if we had acted more quickly, we could have saved over half a million dollars in electricity costs. So, you know, here we are, and I just feel like we spent the money to do a study and the result was a much more expensive outcome. Hindsight being what it is, I just wish we had had a process that allowed us to go more directly to the manufacturers and save the taxpayers a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? There is no one else, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two twelve. Two thirteen.
Resolution number two hundred and thirteen of two thousand and fifteen. Bond ordinance dated October sixth, two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance authorizing an additional $2,100,000 bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York to pay costs of a street light replacement project in and for said city.
Long roll.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Shatter.
Yes.
Alderman Brown.
Yes.
Alderman Sash.
Yes.
Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, eight zero. Now move on to resolution number two fourteen.
Resolution number two hundred and fourteen of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Authorizing adopting a bond ordinance in a sum of $3,500,000 to bond the water transmission main rehabilitation project.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two fifteen.
Resolution number two thirty fifteen of two thousand and fifteen. Bond ordinance dated October sixth, two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance authorizing the construction of improvements to the water transmission system and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York at maximum estimated cost of $3,500,000 and authorizing the issuance of $3,500,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll.
Alderman Shatter.
Yes.
Alderman Brown.
Yes.
Alderman Sash.
Yes.
Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two sixteen.
Resolution number two hundred and sixteen of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Authorizing bonding for construction for York Street D E C Water Quality Improvement Project Round Eleven for the uptown parking lots.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. Now move on to resolution number two seventeen.
Resolution number two hundred and seventeen of two thousand and fifteen. Bond ordinance dated October sixth, two thousand and fifteen. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of $340,000 bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York to pay costs of renovations to parking lots and the relocation of a fire hydrant in and for said city.
Long roll.
Alderman Brown.
Yes.
Alderman Sash.
Yes.
Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Shatter.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to resolution number two eighteen.
Resolution number two hundred and eighteen of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Requesting for rising to provide fiber optic internet access.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. Now move on to resolution number two nineteen.
Resolution number two hundred and nineteen of two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. To confirm the direct ground field opportunity area due to the implementation plan and direct generic environmental impact statement, D G E I S, Brilla Hudson Riverport dated September of two thousand and fifteen, is complete and ready for public review.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Now move on to resolution number two twenty.
Resolution number two hundred and twenty, two thousand and fifteen. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York. Authorize bonding and approved funding in the sum of $35,000 to relocate a fire hydrant on Ulster Avenue.
On the question. There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight zero. That concludes the resolutions for this evening. Do I ask a motion to adjourn? Is there any, any others that would like to offer a conclusion?
I'd like to close the meeting in light. In memory of some important persons, um, they were recently, they recently passed away. I'd just like to say to these. Don't take flight. Don't take home. Death. We gotta re-lease. I'd just like to say that I like the way these people together to honor the lives of the lost and this kind of terrible accident. And it's beautiful to see so many different people come together out of respect for their lives to these ways, um, lost, um, things.
Anyone else? Alderman Shatter.
Sir, I'd like to close the meeting in memory of Phil Scapidi. I'm sure, I looked around, he's not too many years old, but it's awesome. We probably remember Mr. Scapidi was.
He's awesome, awful lot.
He was the vice principal and principal at the high school. And he was one tough son of mine. Matter of fact, he had his paddle in his gasket. I remember that hanging on his wall. Not that I went there much, mind you, but he was, he was a nice guy. When you saw him come back to school, you didn't want to get involved with the office. He was a veteran, has a lovely family behind him. So we will, we will listen.
Anyone else? There is no one else. I'll call for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Close. Motion is adopted, eight zero. Thank you very much.